Board of Education. Ms. Peck, if you would do the roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. All right, everyone is present, and with that, if you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the reading of the mission statement, it is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. All right, on to Agenda Item Five. Speakers and students for public comment. And our policy does state the 30-minute time duration for public comment. There are quite a few items on the agenda tonight, so I'm inclined to say, well, let's see how far we get, I have no idea how many we're even signing up, so. Awesome, thank you. Perfect, wonderful. And just a reminder, for those of you that did sign up, you were offered a copy of our policy, 167.3, which does cover all of the different obligations that the speakers have, and just some good reminders in terms of etiquette and presentation. So Ms. Peck will keep time for you, so please be mindful of that, and we are limited to three minutes, and that is for consistency purposes, and we will be holding everyone to the three minutes. So with that, let's start, our first speaker is Robin Baker, and also if you could state your name and address, please.
Yes, I am Dr. Robin Baker, Wausau, Wisconsin. Good evening, Dr. Hiltz and board and the public. I am a doctor of chiropractic. Our only child went through the Wausau School District, grades one through 12. I am here to respectively request that the Wausau School District consider rescinding their mask mandate, allow an optional mask or face covering policy for the following reasons. Viruses have been with us since the beginning of time, they are beneficial and harmful. Our innate and adaptive immune systems constantly monitor and moderate the effects of these viruses, bacteria, fungi, and other microorganisms inside of us, our microbiome. If you believe in evolution, we would have developed some type of permanent mask or face covering for survival of our species. If you are a Christian, as I am, then God, who is omniscient, would have designed us differently if we needed masks to survive, since he knows and is the past, present, and future. We don't have masks as part of our anatomy. The size of this virus is a thousand times smaller than the thread of fabric or material. There have been recent large scientific studies such as DanMask-19 from the CDC, New England Journal of Medicine, that show there is no statistically significant protection with mask-wearing. More importantly, we are not addressing the risks of using these. They are not entirely benign without risk. Expiration of our breath is a waste product, and never should be rebreathed without proper controls. With masks, we are breathing in concentrated viruses, bacteria, spores, excessive carbon dioxide, too little oxygen, nanofibro particles the mask is made of, the chemicals used to make masks or launder them. A medical physician I spoke to a few weeks ago stated, "The growing field of the future will be pulmonology due to mask-wearing today." There is no way to properly train every human in mask protocol nor enforce it. Masks are very useful in controlled environments such as industrial manufacturing or a surgical unit, but they follow OSHA regulations. I have provided the board with a list of just a small sampling of my resources. Long-term oxygen deprivation manifests in numerous symptoms in illness-disease processes. Even minor hypoxia can cause insidious long-term tissue and organ damage, especially the brain, which uses 25% of our oxygen. Hypercapnia can occur extremely rapidly and is missed by untrained persons. This can result in similar symptoms. Cancer thrives in an anaerobic environment. Lack of monitoring of all this makes such policies experimental and violates our constitutional rights in the Nuremberg Code. So what about the psychosocial aspects of face covering for emotional health, language acquisition, or emotional cues acquired during child's development? The science proves children are particularly resilient to SARS-CoV-2 and rarely transmit to adults. The CDC's own data shows a 99.99% survival rate for those zero to 19 years of age. A very large study done in North Carolina Y-Camps of 6,830 staff resulted in only 19 COVID cases.
You've reached your three minutes, ma'am.
Okay, and we're transmitting.
Thank you. All right, and next, we have Mr. Jack Hogendike. Hogendike, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack Hogendike, Hilltop Road, Wausau, Wisconsin. I'm here also to advocate for asking the board to make the mask mandate optional for our kids in school. Just today, I saw an interview that was done of Dr. Marty McCurry, an American surgeon, professor, and author from Johns Hopkins University Hospital, and he made the statement that today, in America, 80% of adults have either been vaccinated or have already developed natural immunities to the COVID virus. He also mentioned that current cases of COVID in the United States is about 1/10 of a typical mild flu season. So the question I would ask is, are masks really necessary for our children? And don't you think it's time? We allow parents to use their wisdom to decide whether or not their children should be wearing masks in school. You know, everything is risk and reward. We all took a certain amount of risk just coming here today, driving in a car. People get in accidents, they get injured, sometimes they die. And there's a lot of other factors. It's not only the health risk, but there's the psychological, the emotional, the mental health that we need to consider for our kids as well. So again, I would ask that this board would vote to make the masks optional. I also wanted to mention very quickly that there is a leadership training coming up on May 22 at Wausau East High School Auditorium by an organization called Every Black Life Matters. They're going to talk about issues like strategic training on how to address critical race theory, social justice, and racism in America. I think it's an important topic, there's a lot of discussion about that today, and so I would urge anyone who wants to attend this, they can go to everyBLM.com and sign up for this free lecture on the 22nd of May, Saturday, at 6:00 PM at Wausau East High School Auditorium. Thank you very much.
All right, and next, we have Bruce Graul.
I'm Bruce Graul, I'm 1115, I live 1115 North 10th Street in Wausau, and I'm a geriatric nurse practitioner, and one of the nursing homes that I practice in here, I had 12, 12 of the 18 residents that contracted COVID died immediately. The majority of those who survived only lasted about a few more weeks, and then they passed. They were spouses, siblings, parents, grandparents, and children. In my 36 years of practice, I never saw this with the flu. I wouldn't want anything like this happening in our schools. The Marathon County Health Department has been ranking COVID activity high for several weeks. North Central Wisconsin has become the only region in the state with growing COVID hospitalizations. Kids have yet to be proven to be immune to COVID, but they do seem to have some response to variants of COVID. Staff and teachers are certainly susceptible. Because of vaccine apprehension and far-out fear-ratcheting rationales, we're far from establishing a controlled herd immunity, thus requiring continued mitigation practices, including mask-wearing. That's the science, it's not an opinion. 70 to 80% of staff and contractors should be vaccinated, at the least. I'm not aware of any respectable psychological concerns about kids wearing masks in school. At the very least, they can learn about being considerate of others by wearing one. Using low death rate for children as an argument against masks doesn't appreciate the extreme hardship a positive result or a sick child poses a working family. This burden should be mitigated as much as possible, mandating, again, continued mask wearing until the CDC determines when we will no longer need to wear masks. And every discussion that this school board has about this issue should include a representative from the Health Department. That allows science, not opinion, to lead. Our community's health should be driven by science and altruism, not self-serving, personally biased political agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graul. Thank you. All right, and next we have Erin Gunther.
My name's Erin Gunther, I live in Wausau on Spruce Street, and I'm here today just to obviously support, hopefully, our board's decision in making masks optional. Some of the common sense things that I see on a daily basis are things like our school's district's website, so using that as an example, on 5/7, okay, Friday, our school district website said that there were eight cases of coronavirus, okay? I actually counted seven, even though the total was listed at eight, but they were all students. So before I would get into quarantine and all the hours of instruction loss, I would just point out that at this point, our county population is 135,692 people, of which eight are sick, okay? The county data on the same website shows that there are 10 cases, and it also shows since March of last year, ages zero to 19, there were 14,611 cases and zero deaths of kids in that age, okay? So I'm pretty sure our immune systems have worked, I appreciate the help, but I think an overall policy for everybody doesn't always work for individuals. The state data on the state's DHS website is preliminary data, it says in Marathon County, there were 225 COVID deaths, okay? Again, that's out of 135,692 people, so you guys can figure out the percentage on that, all right? In their 5/8 or May 8 preliminary data, they have three cases confirmed, three. And again, in that county of 135,692 people. So you're seeing over 40 schools now in our state making this change. The science hasn't changed, but the case numbers have, okay? States that are opening are seeing cases drop, people are being more obviously aware of it and concerned, and exercising, you know, their own choices and freedoms and making the right decisions, okay? That's all I really got, I mean, the writing's there, the data's there, you just have to do the work instead of watching the television. So I'd like to think we can use some common sense and make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. All right, next we have Kate Grueling.
Hello, I'm Kate Grueling, I'm from Wausau, County Road 0, and I'm a family physician in Wausau. I have some prepared remarks, but I'd like to make some comments if I have time after that. So we all know the data, the accurate data, the scientifically-based data, not picking things and trying to put it together. We also know that disability, long-term disability for people like me who had COVID and have long haulers, and that's why I have a raspy voice. So we need to talk in bigger terms and not just, did a few kids die or not? So, but to go on, so all of our recently elected and re-elected board members stated they wanted the board to follow science and data. Again, science and data, not plucking something out, trying to misconstrue it, or to take things from random people who do not agree with general consensus. So the science and data are clear, that masks should be worn, and other practices should be worn in school settings as well as in other large group settings. It's unequivocal data, it's not up for consensus, or it is a consensus statement, it's not up for that, there's a few people who say that's not the case. It's what the science states, it's what we've seen with previous pandemics, smallpox, everything else. It's what the CDC states, and it's what all the national and international authorities state on the subject. It's also what our newly elected and re-elected board members, employers state. Greenheck, they follow all the protocols that are recommended by the CDC, bone and joint, and their associate therapy department. Follow, they wear masks, they don't die, they don't lose oxygen, otherwise they probably shouldn't keep working. United Health Group, they require masking and all those other social distancing procedures. Aspiris definitely does, and any surgeon there is required to wear a mask in the office as well as in the operating room unless in an enclosed office space. Medical schools also, all, including his medical school, have strongly recommended masks in her doing research. But besides those employers, what other businesses and areas require masking and social distancing? Menards, John Menard is one of the most conservative people in Wisconsin, but he does it because he knows it helps them make money because they can stay open. Walmart, the same issue. The list goes on. So no matter how you look at it, masking, social distancing, and other measures save lives, minimize disability, and keep the economy growing. So follow the science, follow the data, follow CDC recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grueling. And next we have Mr. Corey Sillers.
I'm Corey Sillers, address is 223-565, County Road KK, Tonterbury Mountain. I have an eighth grader and an 11th grader. Good evening, Wausau families. Last fall, I addressed the school board with passion and obvious emotion to stress the need for our students to be back in the classroom. That plea was ignored, along with hundreds of other pleas from parents and students of this district. So over 6,000 voters spoke at the ballot box as a reminder of who the real bosses are of the district. The voters have sent their message. We expect the school board members to change the masking policy and project relaunch, make it optional for all situations, classes, and events. No exceptions, no negotiated concessions. If you or your family feel at risk, then please wear a mask or stay at home, whatever is best for your student. The rest of us are done being forced to wear a mask when it doesn't help with COVID-19. Dr. Hiltz, the families of this district are asking you for even stronger leadership as the board makes these changes to project relaunch. You and the administration have the support of over 6,000 voters, and we ask that you show the courage necessary to implement these policy changes. Do not be fooled by the false narratives of the political left and the socialists. Just last week on ABC News, Dr. Rochelle Walensky from the CDC confessed that the CDC was taking input from over 50 outside groups in order to write their new guidelines in such a way as to help them out with the narrative that they have been pushing. The CDC is lying to the American public by manipulating the data in order to help teachers, unions, and other socialists push their agenda on our children. The United States of America sends our young men and women into harm's way to free and liberate the oppressed around the world. It is time to end the oppression of us and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sillers. Next we have Shane Hendrickson.
Shane Hendrickson, Lake Shore Drive, Red Mountain. I also concur with what he is saying, that masks got to be optional, they truly do. Pardon my missus, I'm not used to speaking in front of people, but we got some points written down here. Parents and students should have the choice, the option to wear a mask. You want to be young adults, they got to be responsible, let them make the choice. If you're not going to let them make the choice, you as a board should stand fully responsible for the health of every one of them students that walk through every one of these doors, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, it doesn't matter. Your votes should be held accountable to whether these students should be wearing masks or not. We do not know the long-term effects of students who are wearing masks, what it's doing to their lungs, smoking pot, cigarettes, we know what that does to your lungs. We don't know what breathing CO2 and all the other crap that, they touch something, they take their mask off, they put their mask on, it gets in their face, it gets in their lungs, they're sucking that in all day. That is wrong. That is wrong for a student board to sit there and say, "You have to wear a mask." That is wrong and unhealthy for every one of them students. Also, mask bullying, how many times do you see kids getting bullied for not wearing a mask? I got kicked out of Menards for not wearing a mask. I don't shop Menards. Plain and simple. You can't, and if you do, teachers, the student board, everybody should be held responsible for letting kids bully kids without masks. Every one of you should be accountable for your actions. And if, to comply with this guy's, it's a good mark on him. My grandpa was 98 years old, had COVID, survived. Old people die every day for every reason. To sit there and blame COVID on something like that, I'm not buying it. They probably had underlying issues that they were going to die anyways. They were in a home, they're going to die, you know? And I want to read a quote coming from one of your own. I asked this person, I says, "Happy Mother's Day, day late, also, does your school make masks optional?" Thanks, we're still required, it's awful. It's so sick of them. That's from one of your own. So you don't think it's just about the students and the parents that are fed up with mask-wearing? It's also your teachers. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. And our final speaker is Al Hockers?
AR, okay.
AR Hockers.
Yep. Hi, I'm AR Hockers, I live at Park Avenue in Wausau. So super cool to hear about the socialist regime, thanks. Been apparently very busy. Okay, so fun story, since we like anecdotes here. My daughter, at the ripe old age of zero months, has asthma. I don't know if anybody's ever woken up at 2:00 in the morning, hearing your daughter gasping for breath? I'm going to put it on your highlight reel as, spoiler alert, crap. It's not fun listening to anybody gasp for breath, not to mention your child who can't even understand why she can't breathe. So COVID would really, really, really screw my life up, but more than that, it would screw her life up. So maybe anecdotes aren't your thing. So let's talk about numbers, actual numbers, not god numbers or whatever. So indoor masking, still recommended for fully vaccinated adults. 90 or more percent of school takes place indoors. That means that 100% of kids, K through 5, who cannot get a vaccine, should probably still be wearing masks if fully vaccinated adults should still be wearing masks indoors. Top mitigation against COVID, CDC lists universal correct use of masks. Imagine that. As of last week, 23% of kids were infected with COVID. Now, as of right now, in the US, in the top 10 pediatric death rates, COVID, somewhere between 6 and 9, because of course, the year's not over, we're still young. Okay, we do not have the information on long COVID for children. As we've heard tonight, somebody here had a raspy voice just from it. We don't know what's going to happen, and you're right, gentlemen, before, everything should be on your heads. I really hope that it maybe isn't, in case somebody dies, because that would be really sucky if all of you were blamed for it. So why not, instead of just blaming or finding a way to blame, just do the right thing? Vote carefully and think about the children. That's what we're here for, not their parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hockers. All right, and that concludes public comments for tonight. Can I see, I'm sure enough to take the sign-up sheet this time? All right, moving on, Agenda Item Number Six, we have the-
Um, excuse me, Mr. President?
Hey.
I'm sorry.
Could you speak a little bit louder, it's hard to hear?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
How's that?
Thank you.
Better?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Con. All right, approval of the consent agenda, including additional staff, contract increases or decreases, replacement staff, contract renewals, non-renewals, leaves of absence, resignations, terminations, voluntary retirements, minutes from the regular session of April 12, closed session of April 19, both of those 2021. Special session, April 22, 2021, and the special session of April 26, 2021. Payment of bills, donations to the district this month, which include the Wausau Noon Optimist Club, Wild Birds Unlimited, and the Wausau Bird Club, Rebecca Summer and Patrick Allen, Patrick Galligan, Olivia Ratz, and the Wausau East Gridiron Club. So I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with extreme gratitude for all of those that donated this month to the district. So move.
Second.
All right. First by Lee, second by Karen. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next on the list, we have 2021, 2022 teacher contract approvals. We didn't have any updates to any of it. All right, so I'm seeking a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 teacher contracts as presented. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Peck? Seeking a motion? Seeking a motion to approve 2021, 2022 teacher contracts. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion first? If you would like there to be, yes, there's certainly- I wouldn't like it, but if somebody has any discussion or questions, that should be done at this point in time, otherwise we'd be voting without any kind of discussion or awareness of the discussion. So if there are no discussion questions- I don't think there's any other information to submit, is there? No, it's just the list of teachers that we'd like to issue contracts to. No questions. All right, so, yes.
Pat Fisher?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
O'Neal?
Yes.
Stainhur?
Yes.
Menstral?
I'm Stain.
Karen Manther?
Yes.
Steve Wester?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Item Eight, old or recurring business, we've got to think of a better name for that, but maybe next time. All right, so the first item, from the Education Operations Committee meeting, legal expense summary for third quarter. At the April Ed Ops Committee meeting, Chief Finance and Business Officer Bob Test presented the summary report representing all legal expenses incurred by the district during third quarter 2020, 2021. The report is broken down by law- The report is broken down by law firm and legal advice sought. Item number two, the 2021, 22 budget reconciliation, this item is listed for action. For those of you that attended or watched, remember there was a lot of discussion at the April Ed Ops Committee meeting, led by Mr. Tess, who presented the budget reconciliation plan aligned with district shared key interests that will be applied in development of the 2021, 2022 budget. So, I'm seeking a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 budget reconciliation plan as presented.
So moved. Second.
All right, first and a second, any questions or follow-up from...
Yes, it says that it's corrected, and I just wondered what the corrections are.
The correction was made during the meeting last week.
Okay, okay.
So you saw what happened during the meeting, that was forty-eight thousand dollars.
That's when you found like seven hundred thousand in twenty minutes? We figured we'd be at a surplus by now, you've had a lot more time. All right, well, that was certainly good news, so. Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Third on this, in this category, we have Project Relaunch. At the April Education Operations Committee meeting, Dr. Hilt shared an update on Project Relaunch. I am seeking a motion to approve reducing the social distancing requirement from six feet to three feet at the elementary level. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other follow-up items?
Sure, I could, I could offer some, some updates on this. Seeing as the board seemed to have a lot of support for that motion in the, in the committee meeting, we did take the liberty to communicate with parents and let everybody know which, you know, what may transpire. If the board votes yes tonight, we're currently sitting at forty-five students that would make the transition to their home schools in person. Just got that number today finalized. So, with relation to, to that motion, that's the only new information I have. Nothing new on, that I added to Project Relaunch, would you like updates outside of this motion now, President McKee, or would you like me to wait?
I, I'm fine with doing them now, because I think it's all gonna be germane at the end, in the end.
Sure, yeah, just a couple of things, you know, the, the situation is, is constantly evolving. Dr. Rousher and the, and the principals and the athletic directors have been working with WIA and the Wisconsin Valley Conference. So we've been talking about outdoor events, right, whether they're athletic events, or graduation, or other events. And we would like to keep guidance on those similar events the same. So for instance, with the Wisconsin Valley Conference, the, the masks are required for people who are near each other. So for instance, students in a baseball dugout, that's recommended that they wear masks. If they're in the field and they're more than six feet away and competing, they would not be required to wear a mask, coaches would wear a mask. We would like to take that, that guidance and, and apply that to other events like graduation. If, if parents or families are able to sit together in the same household and they're more than six feet away, we would like them to not have to wear masks. So I guess we would just take that, that outdoor guidance and apply it to all of our outdoor events, that would be one update. The other... I might catch it a little bit later, unless there's something, there was one other item I was gonna just add from today. I think I'll leave it at that for right now.
I was curious, why would the students have to be transitioned back to their home schools? That's a big change to take place for the kids, they've been through so much, and to now throw it all up in the air again.
Oh, let me be clear, I'm sorry, that, it was, it was offered to parents, this is all at parent request. This was if the, if the board takes action to reduce the distancing from six to three feet in elementary schools, these are the forty-five children whose parents requested to go back to their home schools.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a question about that as well?
Please.
So, I know the discussion last time was about reducing that six foot to three foot. How, who made the decision to open that up? Because I know there was kind of a discussion about the nineteen students that were waiting, and we sort of said, "We're just gonna remove the barrier," and then it would be up to school, schools, principals, teachers to kind of determine whether or not they could handle that influx. Because I agree, Jane, that it is a pretty disruptive thing to have a massive amount of students come into the schools at the end of the year for teachers in particular. So I'm just wondering how that decision came to pass, that it was opened to everyone, versus just saying, "We're removing this barrier."
Sure, so I guess i- in my interpretation of the board conversation and the board motion, and giving administration the, the ability to determine whether parent requests were viable or not, that's where I took the, that was my interpretation, was that if we're gonna reduce from six to three, then we would open up that opportunity for families, they would approach the principals, who would work with their staff and determine if that was a, a safe situation. And those forty-five are the woes that, that the administration and the staff felt were, were doable.
So ultimately, that would, then the principals and the teachers get to come up with that plan as to whether they can accommodate those students?
Correct, yes.
Oh, great, okay.
And this also affects the students that are already there. You know, they don't get a say in if there's gonna be an influx of more students into a classroom. Those parents need to be made aware too, so that they can make a choice.
Yes, thank you, and that was the, the reason we communicated to all elementary families, not just virtual, or those that were being educated at our alternative site. We were, and I'm sure some are listening right now. So they, they will, they, they were notified that, that there might be students returning, and if they wanted to shift to virtual, obviously that would be, we could make that happen. To my knowledge, we've had no requests to do that at this time.
I think this is, it's an important distinction, I'm glad it was brought up, because I did have some contact from staff asking or giving, listing some concerns of us voting to move students back to in-person. And I've clarified with those staff, the same as we've discussed tonight, that our vote isn't to make a decision on whether any particular student should or shouldn't move back to in-person. That's an administrative decision, like it is every year, in terms of, is there enough space, is there enough staffing? Our vote is just to reduce the six feet to three feet, which is totally consistent with the CDC, and that may result in more students having the opportunity to move back to in-person, but we're not stepping in and saying, "The student should go here, the student, student shouldn't go here."
No, I just wanna make sure that the kids that are going to be affected by all these kids coming in, get a chance to make a decision to, that their families do.
I have a question about the three-foot distancing and the comment that was made, that we want to stay six feet with outdoor activities, with graduation, concerts, those things coming up, I've been hearing a lot of feedback about wanting to have a mask option in those kinds of situations. What was the administration's thinking about that and wanting to keep it at six feet?
So, what I was referring to, the, the WIA and the Wisconsin Valley Conference, all those schools got together to talk about the, the guidelines, again, for, for outdoor spring sports, and, and Dr. Rousher, am I correct on the six feet, or did I misspeak? Okay, thank you, yeah, it's a good point, Lee, and we'll, we'll confirm that. So I was reporting six feet, as I think that's what the Valley Conference agreed to. I, I will add a little bit, as I see summer schools coming up a little later in the, in the agenda. We are three-feet distance is what we're using as, as spacing at summer school, just so we're consistent moving forward.
I just wanna also add that I printed this right before I came to the meeting. These are CDC updates for operational strategy for K through twelve schools to reflect new evidence on physical distance in classrooms. And so they're saying that the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention is updating K-12 school guidance to reflect the latest science on physical distance between students and classrooms. CDC now recommends that with universal masking, students should maintain a distance of at least three feet in classroom settings. So the three feet is only recommended if there's universal masking. And this CDC update is dated Friday, March nineteenth, and it was the most recent one that I could find. So I also wanted to add that to the conversation.
Keith, I believe there's also a variable on that, on the outdoor masking, having to do with whether or not people were vaccinated?
You know, that, that one hasn't really come up in any of the conversations, because it's hard to know who's vaccinated, who's not, so we weren't going to differentiate.
Okay, as long as we're not imposing more than what the professionals are, are suggesting or recommending, I think that, that's okay. But if there are other rules, and Todd just mentioned some, I mean, there's, there's rules all over the place. As, as long as people understand that they can, if they are vaccinated, I know there's, you know, specific guidelines for outdoors. I, I don't know how you police, I don't think you police it at all.
Right, yeah, and, and that's, that's part of the decision, you know, we don't wanna have people walking in showing us their vaccine card, that's not the role we want to play. You know, if we were outdoors right now, we would, under these new guidelines, we would not have to be masked, because we're more than six feet away. So, yeah, nothing about, about vaccinations, no. Are we correct on the six?
So in other words, they're not utilizing three feet or six feet, just socially distancing, correct? Have you found out anything else pertaining to what the WIA has said? Because I've been at several track meets, and at these track meets, it's very hard to find a mask anywhere, let it be with athletes or fans. They're outside, they're competing, and fans are in the stands, doing what they have to do by distancing, but yet with no mask. So, are we gonna talk about that as well? We're kinda talking about a lot of things right now, and it's kinda getting convoluted.
Well, the only, the only thing I would share is, is what the, the Valley Conference has, has suggested, right? That, again, athletes who are not able to social distance, they aren't competing, they should be masked, coaches should be masked, and I believe officials would be masked. Competing students would not be. And again, fans, it's, it's, if they can social distance, whatever it's defined as, they would not be required to wear masks then.
Isn't that, isn't that our current policy already? That, our current policy already is if, as long as you can maintain distance outside, we don't require masks, right?
Yeah, yeah, we would need no board action to, to, this will be consistent with current board policy.
Dr. Hilt, you'd mentioned summer school too, you said that summer school was gonna be at the three feet of distancing. And I'm assuming that that implies that current masking policies?
Yes, so what we, so the, the summer school's been developed really since January. So I checked in with one of the, you know, the lead folks of our summer school program, wanted to confirm our status. So our status is three feet of distance with masks. I also asked about enrollment, to see if, you know, are people signing up for summer school? And they indicated, yes, they're right on track for a typical enrollment year, there's a month left. And, and they also feel that a number of, of families are waiting to see what happens before they commit to, to summer school.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts? Comments? Okay. All right, with that, we had a first and a second. So I'm looking for a vote to approve the reducing of social distancing requirements from six to three feet at the elementary level. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next on the list, we have schools...
Mr. Board President, I have a couple of motions I'd like to call on this Project Relaunch topic. My first motion, effective immediately, masks are to be optional for all students and staff.
So there's a motion on table.
Hold on, I'm just trying to capture it.
Second. So that we can have a discussion.
Okay, so the motion from Mr. Creacher, relative to Project Relaunch, is that effective immediately, all students and staff would be optional to... Masks optional.
I will second that.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Comments?
Yeah, before, before we talk about the merits of it, I would, one issue I would have would be the timing of it, in the sense that our normal procedure would be that a, a big change like this would go through the Education Operations Committee meeting, which meets already next week. And if it was, if it had majority support to go forward to the next meeting, we would then vote on it at, at the following meeting, which could even be a special meeting next week. And this is, this is a board hearing or a board meeting, there is no public interruption or public comment during this process. You're allowed, you're allowed to be here to witness it, you're not allowed to interfere with our discussion.
Continue.
So, our, our normal process is for something like this, that it, as everybody knows, it goes through the Education Operations meeting, which is only next week, it's not very far from now. That's what alerts people that we're discussing it, then if it's, if it has a majority approval, then it goes to either the regular meeting or the special meeting to approve. It's very outside the norm for us to vote on something like this on a first-time, first-read at a regular meeting like this. There are certain times where we do it, where there's an emergency, where there's something, timing-wise, just can't wait until next week. We've had masks on the whole year. So I, I don't, there's nothing about this to me that is, is an emergency that would cause us to go away from our normal procedure and address this at Ops next Monday.
We have the ability to take action though tonight, and as far as the public being notified about what we may or may not be doing, I'd submit that there's quite a few in this audience and in the community that are aware what we were going to be here potentially talking about. The Project Relaunch is a very fluid and very broad, you know, topic that we get to bring forward and change as the data and information changes. And the data that I submitted detailing the case data, the seven-day average, which is a number that people follow, detailed where in the Wausau School District boundary, where the peaks, the peak of the seven-day average was at seventy-eight. Today, it is at six and continuing to decline, the sixty-day, seven-day average is at that six-figure and number. In Marathon County, the peak was about two-hundred-and-nine in the fall, and today sits at fourteen and dropping. We know who this virus affects, it's the elderly, that's shown in the case data for Marathon County. It shows that out of the hundred-and-eighty-six or so people that have died due to COVID, ninety-one percent of them are over the age of sixty, zero below the age of twenty here in this county. So the data that I presented, you know, I think demonstrates that now is the time to, to take action, to make them optional. And again, it's optional, if you, you know, wanna wear your mask, that, that is fine, but there are many other things going on, you know, with, with masks and students, and I just believe in free choice, and, and I think we're at a point in this situation, looking at Marathon County, looking at the Wausau School District, that it is time to make some changes. This was never intended to be permanent, these were preventative measures, and all the data, in my opinion, points to making some change.
I agree with John that we have the, that we have the ability to, to vote on it tonight. There's, we don't have a policy, some districts have a policy that require a reading and then a second reading, and we don't have that. So I agree with John... So I agree with John, we have the ability to do it tonight.
But we have precedents.
We're noticed for it. So we have the ability to do it. I, I'm just speaking to what our normal process and procedure is. But I agree with you, there wouldn't be a policy violation to vote on it tonight.
No, but there's a precedence.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Webster.
One concern that I have is that there are some events that are scheduled that are coming up within the next couple of days even, that in which there are going to be students that are going to be outside, they're going to be either performing or competing or in some kind of recognition ceremony. And, and it would seem to me that even if we did want to postpone it to the Ed Ops meeting, that it would be wise to, to give some discretion to administration to make those kinds of requests possible and optional in those settings.
I guess, I, I would say that we are behind as a district, especially for outdoor events. Many of those in this room, I'm sure if their children are in sports, traveling sports, these events are already being conducted based, you know, with masks optional for outdoor events. So it's already happening in this community. It's already taking place. So there's, there's really, you know, no concern. I guess the concern to me is that we're actually behind. There are over 40 schools, and that's just the schools that I could even find, you know, that are already mass optional. Mozzanee has been mass optional since the beginning of this school district, and DC Everest has been mass mandatory since the start of school. Two schools that started in-person learning to begin with, and their COVID cases are the same, their data is the same.
Thank you, Mr. Krescher. Lance, I'd like to get back to your point if we might, Lee, and just hold, we'll get back to yours too. So procedurally, there's nothing that prohibits us from, from taking an action tonight, taking action tonight. It just doesn't follow historically what we've done in many cases.
Right. We don't have a policy that requires a first reading tonight and then a second reading in the next meeting. We don't, some districts do, we don't. So, and, and there are times where we will vote on something that the first time is brought up on the regular, at the regular meeting. It is almost always, I can't remember a time it wasn't, because of a very time sensitive issue, something that had to be decided. It was, something had to be signed for a board, you know, bond council or something. I don't want to pick on you, Bob, but it's often something that comes financially to us.
Well, I, I think we did it a few weeks ago on, on resolution.
That is the normal process.
Yeah.
There also was a delay in the district email that usually goes out with the agenda on Friday, that goes to the households in the district that have requested, had made the extra effort to make sure that they get this email with the agenda. And a mistake was made and it didn't go out until today. I mean, it was an honest mistake, but those people were not notified, and not everybody is on Facebook. Not everybody has, you know, a school board member calling them and asking them.
I don't, I don't know.
It, it, this just wasn't, isn't properly noticed, and we should be following precedents.
So what didn't, I'm sorry, that's the first I've heard of that, that some, that an email didn't go out to?
Yeah. I, I didn't know about it either until two people contacted me and asked how come they didn't get the email with the agenda on it. But it is a thing. It goes out to the people on email.
Right. It's, yeah.
But people rely on it.
Okay.
But we should confirm that the, the meeting was properly noticed.
Yes.
Obviously, this is a important and passionate subject, and, you know, all of the speakers who, who eloquently stated their views, I think were, were great representatives of each side of that. The, the question, I guess, or the, the point that I would like to make, to me, is the timing, and I, I understand your, your point, Lance, about this is not the norm, but what I would like to do is to see us set a direction, whatever that direction ends up being, so people know what they can expect. You know, if it's just for the rest of this year, that's fine. If it entails summer school, if somebody is so bold as to go, you know, next fall relative to emotion or discussion, we have to get past all of the, the what-if scenarios and send direction to the public. Now, I don't know what that direction is going to be, but in order for us to get on to the more critical, important work of this district, this is very important, I'm not diminishing that, we've got a lot of other things to do. And I feel like until we get this direction set, we're going to continue to spin our wheels and we're going to continue to get bogged down with this particular agenda item over and over and over again. And there may be very valid reasons for that, because whatever's decided today or next week or whatever, we can always revisit. But we, we've got to make some traction here.
I, I have some direction. I, I think we, we have set some direction. I think this, you know, one, I, I appreciate everybody's comments. You know, there's competing medical data on both sides. I'm not a physician.
I'm just not.
But in running an organization, organizations don't do well with unpredictable sudden changes. You know, this, that's why I, I jumped ahead a little bit and communicated to elementary families, so they could have some idea of what we're talking about. So I, I can certainly speak to the why on a lot of this, but I would say we maintain our, our course of action for the rest of the school year. Summer school, it's been communicated that, that it would be masked and three feet. Again, our enrollment is right on where it's supposed to typically be. I, again, and, and they signed up with the expectation that there would be masks. I, again, changing course, people don't respond well to that. If we want confidence and pride in this district, then when we communicate something, they have to know that that's what we're going to do. I would definitely propose that in the fall, and we've already spoken about, you know, fully in person, mask optional, again, knowing that if there is some big fire up of this virus over the summer, you know, that, that obviously gets revisited. So I would say that is our, our direction, and I'd be happy to, to clarify or, or speak any more to that if the board wishes.
Well, and on some of the feedback that, that I've received, I know the board has received a significant amount, and I agree with what you're saying relative to, you know, people don't respond to, to quick change, or organizations don't respond well to quick change. And summer school is predicated on the assumption that masks are going to be required, and people have signed up under that guise. I also know that there is the other side of the coin, where people have not signed up because masks are going to be required. So I think that in all of this, not that that group has been necessarily forgotten about, but I, I don't know that it's been at the forefront of our discussions as, as the days have gone on now. Because there, there is a group out there. I, I hear from many of them. I know other board members have heard from many of them too. They're staying home right now because masks are required, and they're not enrolling in summer school because of masks are required, so.
Understood.
I think there's, there's a huge misperception out there, and I, I don't know that anybody's going to be able to get through it, but wearing masks are an important piece of the mitigation that we do for this pandemic. And it, it keeps the wearer safe somewhat, but we wear a mask for others. And when, when you choose not to wear a mask, you're saying, I may have the virus, I don't know, I may be asymptomatic and spreading it, but it's my choice to give you the virus. And, you know, if, if this causes harm in your family, you know, that's not my problem. And I don't know when we got away from looking out for each other. That's, you know.
I hear.
Margaret Mead is, is given this quote, and I don't know if she really said it or not, but it's, "When did civilization start? It was not with a pot, it was with a, a broken femur, a mended femur. Somebody took time to take care of their fellow man and make sure that that femur was hidden and was fixed, and that they were safe and could live." And by us saying that we don't need masks, knowing that that's how the virus spreads, it just, it just breaks my heart. And it's a choice, you don't have to go somewhere if you don't want to wear a mask there. That's not bullying. When you go into a place that requires a mask and they said, please put a mask on, that's not bullying. But we've gotten letters from several teachers that see bullying going on in the other direction, that the kids are being teased because they are willingly wearing masks and they're using the hand sanitizers. And that bullying will only increase if we go to mask man.
I, I appreciate your comments, Jean, and I, I agree with some of what you said. I, I think it's a bit too strong to say that if someone is not wearing a mask, you're saying that they're saying it's okay for me to give you a virus. I, I don't believe that that is, I, I don't believe that that's a common.
I don't think it's an intentional, it's, it's indifference.
No.
Love and hate are not opposites, love and indifference are. And when you're indifferent to your fellow man and, and.
Right.
And think that you're healthy, and if somebody's got some magic thing that they have at home that they can take a test every morning and see that they don't have COVID, so they don't need a mask, I'd love to see it, but you don't know if you have it. Asymptomatic means you could be sick, and people that are asymptomatic can have the long haul problem. It's not not being sick. Asymptomatic is not equal to not being sick.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I actually prepared this because I just want to be really careful with my words, but I want to preface this statement just by saying that I've spent the past year working with dozens and dozens and dozens of patients who were COVID positive while I was treating them, and were post-COVID hospitalizations. I have known people who've lost their lives to COVID and lost loved ones to COVID, and I'm very familiar with the impact of COVID. I care deeply about my patients and the concerns actually of everyone in this room. I also appreciate the opinions and emails we've received from everyone, and the physicians and healthcare professionals who may disagree with me. But while I respect your opinions, I think it's really important for all of us to remember that no physician speaks for all physicians. In this community, there are incredibly knowledgeable individuals that have looked at the same science and drawn very different conclusions about handle, handling the pandemic and how to do so. I get my information personally from academic research studies and the local data from our district dashboard, the Marathon County dashboard, and the DHS website, which I check all three daily. I don't form my opinions from social media, politics, or public opinion. They're based on science, local data, and extensive experience with COVID patients in this community. It's important to remember that while we all don't agree in this room, we do not need to name-call, blame, shame, or suggest that individuals on any side of this issue do not care about humanity or their neighbor. It's not true, and it's toxic for our community. I'd like to suggest that we have an unbalanced narrative. You may recall that our district chose to start students 100% virtual at the recommendation of some of the very same people we've heard from. It led to severe consequences of hundreds of students leaving the district and massive academic learning loss. Students were finally given a hybrid option, actually during the peak of our COVID numbers in November. Many said it would lead to soaring infections. It did not. Then you may remember there was outrage from when, from many when we moved from hybrid to four days in-person learning on March 1st and could not guarantee six foot distance. Many warned that COVID cases would explode. They did not. There were also huge concerns that returning to in-person learning without vaccinations for our staff was reckless and will lead to massive COVID cases among them. That also did not happen. Let's be honest and let's be grateful. What do we actually know? All of our staff interested in receiving the COVID vaccine has been given the access and the time to do so. Our most vulnerable community members have also had access to the vaccine and the time to do so. Many individuals 16 and older who desire to be vaccinated have also done so. Over 38% of Marathon County has already been vaccinated with at least one dose. Our COVID numbers continue to decline in Marathon County, and as of today, on our district website, we have zero positive staff and three positive students. There will never be zero risk of COVID. Our most cautious and student families, students and families will have an excellent learning option with WAVE. We cannot wait until all young people have access to a vaccine because we have no idea when that will be. That would need to be age five through 16. So even though there's talk right now about 12 to 16-year-olds, we have no idea when that's going to extend. And even when we're there, there will still be never zero risk of COVID, and many will still choose to not receive the vaccine. So while there may be some increased cases among children, what we're not seeing is extreme sickness. To suggest fears of 20 and 30-year consequences of COVID is not based on science. No one knows what is going to happen in 20 or 30 years for anyone, let alone children who have such mild or asymptomatic cases. We cannot be a board or a district that makes decisions based on feelings of safety. The feeling of safety as a goal is completely subjective and unmeasurable. It may never be achieved for some, and at best will be an ever-changing goalpost. Our decisions must be based on data and metrics. We've had the benefit of seeing districts all around, as John said, move to mask optional without an increase in COVID positive cases. Increase quarantines potentially, but that's a different issue that we should probably talk about as well. We know that the overwhelming majority of students are spending time outside of school together unmasked and have been doing so for months and months. If you don't know that, you probably aren't spending much time with students outside of controlled environments. Are there unknowns? Yes, there always will be. I believe moving to mask optional is a right step forward for our district and community, and I hate that some people were, will perceive that as reckless or uncaring. I disagree. I've heard from parents whose children have constant headaches, difficulty concentrating, incredible anxiety over wearing masks, and being yelled at. I've heard from parents who say their children's mental health continues to suffer because they have to spend their entire stressful school day without seeing a single smile directed at them. This is not about masks being annoying. Parents should have the option to decide what is best for their children. I can appreciate that removing mandatory masks for the last 14 days would be very difficult on some students, families, and staff. I agree with you, Dr. Hiltz, that a quick change like this can be incredibly disruptive. And so I'm just wondering, Mr. Krescher, if you would be willing, while it would be my preference to do it immediately, I can appreciate that there are some teachers that it will, I, I watched it be incredibly disruptive with pop concert over three to four minute acts, actually. So I know this will be very disruptive, and there will be families and students with high anxiety over what we are talking about as 14 more days of school that are supposed to be celebratory. And so I'm wondering if you would be willing to amend that to be effective starting at the end of school, but immediately for all outdoor activities, including graduation, as well as summer school and signaling for fall learning. I think people need a little time to plan. I think that there are, we've heard from families who will be completely panicked over a change that is effective immediately, and I want to be sensitive and compassionate toward those students and towards the staff that will be burdened to manage whether kids all of a sudden are now moving virtual or moving in person. So I'm wondering, Mr. Krescher, if you'd be willing to amend that to effective at the last day of school for in-school learning, but effective immediately for all outdoor activities, including graduation, moving forward with summer school and fall learning, so that people have a little time to respond.
I can appreciate the, you know, making it effective immediately and what that may cause inside the schools for others. I don't like it. I, I, you know, I, I believe in free choice. I believe all the data points to, you know, that we're, you know, we're there, we need to make a change. I'd be willing to support it if it includes sports, outdoor events, you know, as optional immediately. Any outdoor event, graduation, sports is optional. This is what, this is in line with, you know, all other traveling sports and area sports around us, and obviously some, many other districts. But I think we need summer school to be optional, and fall, we need to, in my opinion, have that, you know, out there so people can make a choice. And I'd argue that if we didn't, we'd see another 500 kids vacate this district next fall.
I agree.
So are you, are you offering that, Karen, as an amendment to Mr. Krescher's original motion?
Yeah. I mean, and just to respond to you, John, I, it's, I don't like it either. But I am trying to be somewhat diplomatic and compromise in recognizing we are here to represent, you know, all students and certainly our staff who would be, I know, and I've spoken with them, overwhelmed by that change, even though they don't want to be wearing masks. be wearing masks either. And so, yeah, I guess I would like to make an amendment to that.
All right.
I'll second that.
John would have to accept that, and Jim as well.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna read. So the amended motion would be that the mandatory masks remain in effect inside of the district buildings until the end of the school year, but effective immediately, they would be optional for all outside activities.
Can I add maybe for school business only? I know there are some upcoming events held within school buildings that are not being school business, like the one that actually Mr. Hoganite suggested. And I would, I guess, just say that I don't think that that should need to be required to be masked. So I'm, maybe if that needs to be included, I'm not sure.
Okay. I mean, we need some help reconstructing this, but we'll get there. Keith, you gonna say something?
Do we, do we have agreement on that? I guess.
Two, two things. One.
The other, the other piece to this that, and I guess it just, it goes along with your first point, Karen, was that effective immediately, optional outside, perhaps except for outside agencies that have rented the school facilities. But the mandatory component remains only into the end of this school year, which implies that summer school next fall, our, the district policy would be optional.
Right. And I don't know if this needs to be included in the amendment, but I think that we should say it could be reevaluated based on metrics, you know?
Yeah.
If we have confirmed positive cases that increased to over 5% of our district,
That's a good.
We can have a conversation, but it can't be based on feelings and whims and anything anymore.
That's a good reminder, because that is something I know that Lance had brought up many, many times, that just because of what we decide today or next Monday, whatever it is, doesn't preclude us from changing those decisions at whatever point in the future, should the data change or what have you, so.
If I, I may just make a couple of comments. Going back to what Lance had stated, those are procedural things that we should be aware of, but at the same time, those are things that can be changed, and they are precedents when they do get changed. But the bottom line is precedents are made all the time. Second thought, idea here, we'd have to vote on the amendment to the motion to do that first, and then we'd have to do the voting on the motion.
Unless you want a friendly amendment?
Correct.
Well, I, let's, I would prefer that we get this one right. I understand the friendly part, but I'd rather formalize this because this is a pretty, a pretty big deal. So we'll seek, I am seeking a motion, an amended motion to Mr. Krieger's original that states masks, mandatory masks will remain in effect for all district facilities indoor until the end of the 2021 school year. However, after the end of the school year, they become optional. And also effective immediately, outside activities will be optional, including, well, nevermind, I'm just gonna leave it at that. So, so everything until the end of the year, masks will be required, just as they are now. Nothing changes. Effective at the end of the year, they become optional for inside and outside activities. I think if I got that.
And that's the amendment.
So we're voting on the amendment first?
Voting on the amendment first.
Vote on the amendment first.
Mr. President, before we vote on the motion, I have a comment, please.
Sure.
So we just voted to decrease social distancing from six feet to three feet. And the CDC says that if we decrease it to social distancing to three feet, they only recommended three feet where mask use is universal. So are we now going to vote on this for summer and fall and go against the recommendations of the CDC?
The amended motion that is on the table, if that is what the CDC has said, yes, it would be counter to what the latest CDC guidance may be.
Okay, thank you. So just your opinion, do you think that's smart? Do you think that's safe?
My, my role as president is not to offer opinions on what's smart or not. Otherwise, I'd be here all night, frankly.
Okay.
My here is to, my role is just to run the meeting efficiently and make sure that all sides are heard.
Thank you. Okay, so Dr. Hiltz, what is your thought on that? I mean, you're our superintendent of the Wausau School District. What are your thoughts? And?
I think as long as we, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I interrupt, please? I apologize for the interruption, but I'm curious as to where we are right now. Do we have a motion for the amendment at this point?
Yeah.
And a second. If so, I call a question.
There's no such thing.
Wait a minute. I don't think we had a second on the amendment.
Yeah.
There's no such thing as calling a question.
I don't believe we did. The amendment was put out by Karen.
Yes, so we had a first, we need a second.
The motion was moved forward. Who seconded it?
I did.
Lee did.
Okay, so we have a second, so the questions can be continued.
Yes, that was, that was the discussion. So then Ka.
Questions are questions. I don't believe we should have opinions during this point in time with our superintendent. This is a vote by school board members, not by the superintendent.
Well, but I would like to know what he thinks as superintendent. I mean, he is the one that leads our school district. I mean, that's why we hired him. So I would like to know what his thoughts are on that as leading the school district.
I think, Jim, I understand your, I respect that opinion, but given the circumstances, I think if Dr. Hiltz is comfortable, he's more than welcome to offer some thoughts.
Absolutely, sure. Yeah, no, I can speak to that. Again, as far as running an organization, it's the, it's the unpredictable, you know, sudden change that makes an organization, and you've shared that. So if we can, if we keep masking till the end of the school year indoors, the outdoor masking is consistent with the conference, I'm comfortable with that. And summer school, we just have to give them, give families enough warning that if we're going to make a change. And I think it does, it starts June 10, I believe, eight, June 8, thank you. So we've got about a month. So we would, I think we'd get an interesting read on families if we made that change now to see what happens with enrollment, if we made masking optional for summer school.
Okay.
Well, I was asking about what are, what would your recommendations be in regards to this motion?
Well, he's not a voting member, Kas, so his, his recommendation.
I know, I know. He's not a voting member, but I'm, I'm sorry.
No, he just, he just shared with us administration's position on what these changes would mean. That is his role in this process.
I understand that, but I would like to know if he would recommend us to vote yes or no on this, what his recommendation would be as the leader of the school district.
When she's done, we're getting to that one. I'm sorry, Dr. Hiltz.
I, I support the, I support this amended motion. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I needed to know.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ka. Mr. Webster called the question. Is there any opposition to ending discussion on this?
Not on the amended motion. I'd like to be heard on the merits of the main motion after we vote on the amended motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you want me to do it now?
Let's, yeah.
Let's get the amendment out of the way.
Let's, let's vote on the amended motion from Ms. Vandenberg. So the amended motion, do I have to attempt to read it again, Cassie, or do you want to?
I just want to make one clarification. Do you regret it? Do you not point out the exceptions or allegations you need to use for evaluation based on metrics? Or do you want to?
I don't believe the evaluation according to metrics has to be because we've been doing that consistently.
Right.
But yeah, we should include the outside, yeah. Please. Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Seven, two. So the amendment to Mr. Krieger's motion carries?
Correct.
And now. So yeah, I, I supported the amendment for the same reasons that Karen brought up. Just, I think the turmoil of, we've got 13 days of school left would be just too sudden. I'm with Dr. Hiltz where he mentioned earlier in terms of our transition in the fall. I have concerns about summer school, though, given that it's been basically advertised as being with masks. We've hired staff that were told there was going to be masks. I know there's a lot of people here that are really passionate about masks, and I'm just not. And, you know, when I think about the things that are important to me up here is like having as many kids as possible in school, as much as possible, and masks are somewhere down here, other than how they impact up here. So, you know, encore in encore rooms, lunch in lunchrooms, kids working in small groups, normal class settings in terms of where desks are, as normal of a day as possible is all really important to me, and the masks just aren't. I feel safe when I don't have a mask on, and I don't feel all that bothered when I have a mask on. So maybe it's my own personal opinion on it. It just doesn't, I just don't care that much.
But you're fully vaccinated.
But, but how it impacts education is important to me, and
Right.
Whether our staff feel safe is important to me. The students that have contacted me telling me that they're worried, that's important to me. And I, I think by fall, we would be there. I think it's, I think it's a bit of a sudden change for summer school, although I would support the outside part of it. So that's why I support, supported the amendment, but I won't be voting in favor of the main motion. I just wanted to explain why.
Okay. So Mr. Boucher is our parliamentarian. What is next?
Well, let's, let's reread the motion because it's been a while since we were on the original motion. So if you could read the.
It's been amended, so we're not voting on the original motion. We're voting now on the motion that has been amended.
The motion that we have on the table that Mr. Krieger had put forth to begin with. We need to know what we're voting on. So now let's read the motion.
Yes, please. You're too gracious.
What about during sporting events? I thought we agreed to go with WIAA outline, guidelines.
I just wanted to confirm, would this be consistent with the, we don't, you know, we don't want to be rogue with the rest of the conference, you know, having one expectation at one school and different expectations at another. Would this be consistent?
It's, it's close to the conference. And two different, WIAA's language is that masks are strongly encouraged. So even though we're saying, we would say they were optional, WIAA would ask that we continue to encourage them for athletes and spectators and coaches and so on and so forth. The conference is again, they break it down by spectator versus official versus a coach and so on, but that in general for students is that you would wear them when you're arriving to a venue, you want to wear them when you can't distance, for example, they gave the baseball or softball dugout example, those kinds of things. But that's, the athletes would be able to remove their masks while they're actively competing. And they might be a little bit closer in some of them. If you think about soccer, you're certainly going to have close contact while you're on the field competing. But you could wear your mask or your gator on the sideline. Baseball, you could have the mask pulled down while you're on playing centerfield. When you move into the dugout, you might move it up. And then again, the conference has suggested gators rather than traditional masks as an option because the gator is easier to go up and down without worrying about their own.
All right. Well, so based on that, I'm not hearing anything that is going to run contradictory to what's being proposed.
I don't think our, like, if our, if we make masks optional outside, that doesn't prevent us from having to follow valley rules for what to wear in a dugout. I mean, if the valley requires you to have a helmet on when you have to bat, it doesn't have anything to do with what our policies are. So if the valley requires you to have a mask in the dugout, then you got to have a mask in the dugout. That, we're not impacting that.
Right, good.
Also with the WIAA, they always encourage the minimal ruling from them, and you can be more strict if you so choose. Bottom line is, what I'm hearing from you, that is a complete change from the WIAA from the beginning of the basketball season to spring sports at this point in time. Because in basketball, everybody was expected to have that mask up, and the officials were expected to enforce that as well as all the other rules and regulations, which that's an argument I had a long time ago that I don't have to get into.
So I'm still not hearing anything?
They are now reviewing, obviously, at this point in time. So we need to be evaluating.
Okay. So I, I still didn't hear anything that would contradict with, with what we're doing.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Okay.
Okay, wait. I just want to be clear. So, Mr. President, you agree that this motion that we're voting on, it goes against CDC recommendations, and that, Dr. Hiltz, you do recommend this motion? I just want to be clear. Like, that is what is happening right now, and I'm going to vote no because of that. Okay, that is my, that is my vote. I'm going to vote no on this.
That is certainly.
It's a vote against, it's, it's against CDC recommendations. It's against CDC recommendations.
Your vote for CDC.
So.
And I, and I don't know if, if this comment is, is worth making, but I guess I feel compelled that, you know, we got ahead of the CDC when we, when we allowed the secondary students back in too. So I, I think it is, it's guidance, and, and we've always kind of lived within that world of guidance and then looking at our own situation to make our decisions here. So I hear what you're saying, but yeah, I think this is, is a, is a solid decision.
I mean, Dr. Hiltz, I think you're absolutely right. We did, we were, we do get ahead of CDC, but I think that's dangerous and that does set a precedence. So I'm still going to vote no on it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
You can call the question.
Thanks, Ka. All right.
I think we need one more time for the cheap seats. When you wear a mask, you impact no one. When you come into a setting without a mask, you impact everyone around you. So by kids coming into, if we're going to do mask-free in summer school, one kid could come in and say, I'm not going to wear a mask, which means that five kids that feel that that is, that know that that is unsafe, leave. So that one person is affecting everyone else. And I think you have to keep that in mind, too. Yeah, nobody likes wearing these things.
Thank you, Jane. All right.
And, and I also, I also want to add.
The discussion is over on this. We're going to move to a vote.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I really do need to add this.
The question has been called.
I'm, I'm sorry.
There's no such thing as just calling a question.
But, you know, we, we had doctors write to us
We are going to vote on this.
From Aspiris and Marshfield Clinic, saying that they did not support this.
Ka, you don't have the floor.
So.
Okay.
So, you know, that, that is what's happening, that doctors in our area wrote to us saying that they did not support this. I'm done. Thank you.
I just, just so people know, there's no such thing as just calling the question. If somebody calls the question, then there has to be a second. Then there's a vote, and it requires a two-thirds vote to end discussion, okay? Just so you can't just yell out, call the question. That would be the process. Okay?
You are absolutely right, Lance.
Okay.
And, and the president's role is to run the meeting, not silence voices.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you saying, talking to me? No.
Yes.
No.
Lance Charles?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Ben Boucher?
Yes.
Jack Krieger?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Pat, I have another motion, now that we're done with that one. My motion is to, effective immediately, to allow students and staff who have potentially been exposed to COVID-19 into schools for in-person instruction if the following is met. Close contacts, reme- Close contacts remain symptom-free and agree to self-monitor for symptoms a full 14 days following exposure or close contact. Close contacts will immediately remove themselves from the school facility if symptoms develop. Close contacts are strongly encouraged to get tested on day six or seven after exposure to help identify asymptomatic spread.
Mr. President, I mean, these motions are out of order. They're not agendized. The public hasn't been notified. We, they weren't, they didn't go through our meeting process.
We, we've already addressed that.
It is out of order.
Things do come up for various reasons.
It is out of order, sir.
No, it is, it is not perhaps the normal course of business, but it is not out of order in that it does not violate any procedural rules.
It didn't go through the committee meeting.
It doesn't need to.
It doesn't need to?
It doesn't need to.
Okay.
Not if the, if the majority of the board chooses to vote on it. If the majority of the board chooses to vote on it, we vote on it. If enough people share your concerns, then we won't vote on it. That's how the process works. You may not like what's on the table, but that's what's on the table.
I, I would just like some order. This is very chaotic.
I can't agree more. Okay. John made the motion. We need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Nicolai.
So the reason why I brought this forward, this motion is obviously, many are probably aware of what Waukesha, one of the largest school districts in our state with over 12,000 students, recently put this very same quarantine protocol into place. And what they saw and what all districts are seeing is that out of their quarantined staff and students, a large majority, in the case of Waukesha, 99% of those students that were quarantined and staff never tested positive for, for COVID. And so they saw, you know, what taking kids out of school for three weeks at a time was doing and having an effect on their, on their ability to learn. So keeping kids out of school is, is obviously a major concern. And currently, as was stated before earlier, we have eight students that are positive at this point in time. I'm assuming that's the cumulative of staff and students. And that would make up .001% of our student population.
Should we have a second on that?
Second.
Yes, Cody.
So I have a, a question. How does it, how does that differ from the current, the current policy on quarantines? What, what would change?
It would change the sibling exclusion policy, which would be welcomed, to be honest. So right now, if a student is, shows symptoms today, we would have had to send the student home and all their siblings. Their siblings would have to quarantine for even longer than the 10-day period. So they wouldn't be able to come back to school this school year. So that would be a welcome change.
Any other impact other than siblings?
You know, I guess, protocol-wise, I guess I don't understand the, the, the motion really, you know, just hearing it verbally. And so I don't understand the intent. If, if we just want a sibling exclusion, then let's call it that. If we're looking for something else, I'd like to understand.
I think, and I'm going to sound like a broken record here because it's kind of the same opinion as before. I think with only 12 days to go, I'm not really on board with, with John's motion, but I'm on board with the idea behind it because the idea behind it is to have more kids in school more often.
John, can you reread it?
And that some of the quarantines haven't really shown to be helpful, but yet kids are out of school. And I think that next year, next school year, when we don't have both virtual and in-person going at the same time, I think those quarantines will be even more detrimental to our students. And so I fully support looking into limiting our quarantines. I would like to know more information about it and I wouldn't make the change with 12 school days left. But I, I think that's probably the intent behind it and I think it's, it's a great thing for us to look into. I'd like to take some time and learn a little bit more about it and what the changes would be.
But you're saying, Angie, that the sibling exclusion component of that would be beneficial, especially through the end of this year?
Yeah, we, we talked about it, the nursing staff and I, you know, and right now, like I said, that child would not be able to come back to school this year because their sibling had shown some sort of symptoms. Can you reread it, John?
Showing symptoms or tested positive?
Symptoms.
Yeah.
Really?
Yep. That's sibling exclusion for the entire year has been-
And you can think about next year when we don't have a virtual option run along with it, how detrimental that is. I mean, that's why it's important.
Yep.
That's exactly right.
Yes, I can read it again. Effective immediately to allow students and staff who have potentially been exposed to COVID-19 into schools for in-person instruction if the following is met. Close contacts remain symptom-free and agree to self-monitor for symptoms a full 14 days following exposure. Close contacts will immediately remove themselves from the school facility if symptoms develop. Close contacts are strongly encouraged to get tested on day six or seven after exposure to help identify asymptomatic spread.
So that would include removing, that would include not having quarantines then for people, even if they were in con, close contact with somebody who was tested positive?
Correct.
So that's a little bit more than what you were describing, Angie.
We don't quarantine the close contacts usually. That's usually the health department. We have nothing to do with that. The only time we would quarantine close contacts is if it was in a school setting. We literally had to quarantine a cohort, I think, three weeks ago and before that it was before Christmas. So that rarely happens that we do anything with close contacts in the schools.
Okay.
Again, we're talking about symptomatic people. We don't know who is asymptomatic unless we're going to start testing kids on a regular basis and staff. We don't know who has it and who doesn't. We keep operating on this, if they have symptoms.
Right, and, and I agree as well. And, and your statement, Mr. Kreischer, is disingenuous because I printed out the Waukesha County Department of Health and Human Services, their, their immediate release, which was May 6th. And in it, it says, "Waukesha County, in partnership with area school districts, will immediately amend quarantine guidelines for K through 12 schools that continue to commit to other COVID-19 mitigation efforts, including mask-wearing. The guidelines are designed to protect the overall health and well-being of students, teachers and staff by balancing the lower risk of transmission in schools with the burden of quarantine." And then in the second paragraph, it says, "The conclusion reached is that the risk of COVID-19 transmission in school settings is low when preventative measures primarily mask usage and distancing are utilized in a monitored environment." We just got rid of mask usage. I printed it out. So what you are saying is disingenuous.
I do have a clarify, clarification as well. So I was speaking from the student's standpoint. Tabitha was going to speak from the staff's standpoint.
So as, as we process close contacts in the school district, we, it is the county that does the quarantine requirements. We share what the county quarantine requirements are with staff when we're processing them. So we are working off of a chart that the county has given us and we let them know that and then the county follows up and will issue those quarantines. What you've described, Mr. Kreischer, is consistent with the county quarantine requirements for those that are vaccinated and more than 14 days out from their vaccination. So for example, we just had a situation today where a staff member contacted us because two of their children were quarantined at home. And they could stay home by themselves, but the staff member said, I believe I have to quarantine. And the answer was, no, you don't because you're more than 14 days out from your second vaccine. So that person was able to still come to work. But had that person only received one of the two vaccines or none of their vaccines, they would have had to quarantine following the county guidelines. So I just want to, I do want to just clarify that so that there's at least an understanding that the county is the one who issues those quarantines and that would be the standard that they would use. And we simply communicate that to the staff so they're aware of what's coming from the county.
And I, I would say that one other component to this is that obviously the student and/or staff member has the choice to follow those guidelines or to follow these guidelines according to what they, you know, if they want, if they are close contacted and they want to quarantine themselves, they are welcome to do that and make that choice.
Could I change this conversation just a little bit? You're introducing a fairly complex motion the night of. We're not even sure exactly how it interacts or interferes with our own current protocol. Could we get one week to look at your written motion so that we could come with an administrative recommendation?
I'd like to know also what, what our, along with that, know what power we have or don't have in terms of the health department. You're saying the health department tells us A, B, or C. I mean, we have to follow that? We don't have to follow that? How will this impact that? I think I'd like to know all of that information before we vote on it.
I, I think that, that's a reasonable request, Dr. Hiltz. The one area though, that I would like to make sure, Angie, you talked about the sibling exclusion, which would be beneficial. Is there a component to Mr. Kreischer's motion that we could act upon that would give administration some more flexibility frankly and help us keep those kids in the classroom more?
Yeah, I think we would welcome a motion that would say that we would no longer follow sibling exclusion if a child has, has been identified as a close contact or is quarantined. So if we, or if they show symptoms. So if we tomorrow have a child showing symptoms, a lot of times it's allergies, whatever it is, we would not send their siblings home unless if that child has a fever and like three of the other symptoms is what we've been talking about. So that would then reduce all of those kids having to be quarantined.
Okay. Is that seen?
You got a question down there?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lee.
Mr. President, one of the concerns that I have is this, as this discussion goes on, is it doesn't seem to me that we have any right or responsibility to insist that anyone be vaccinated. And if we're starting to check and see, was this person vaccinated and are they two, two, are they had both shots? Are, then I think we are starting to violate some very basic constitutional rights. And I sort of hold the Constitution when I took this position on the board and I'm very, very concerned that we not get caught up in that.
Understood. Thank you. So the question now is, John has a motion on the table. There was a request from Dr. Hiltz to postpone addressing that motion in its entirety. However, it sounded to me like, unless I misinterpreted, that there is some benefit that we could act on tonight that would give administration and those families that are being impacted by it some relief from the quarantine, the current quarantine guidelines. Would that be reasonable?
I would follow. Angie knows more about that.
Okay. So if someone would like to offer an amendment to Mr. Kreischer's motion and then John, we can consider the rest of yours in totality at next week's meeting, if that's all right with you.
Would we be able to take action?
Next, next week? Yeah, I believe so.
Yes.
If we make a special meeting?
Right.
Yeah, approve it and then make a special meeting the following day to, to formalize.
Or even that night?
Yeah.
Do it that night.
So yeah, we, we can certainly do that.
I, I can agree to that, to give a week.
Okay. So someone would need to amend that motion per what Angie had talked about.
So, so I can make an amendment to that motion stating such that we postpone the vote on Mr. Kreischer's amendment until next week and also, but immediately end the sibling exclusion tonight. Does that make sense? And I, I just want to clarify one thing, just so everybody knows. When I make comments or decisions on here, they're my own. They're not any employer or whatever. Just so you all know that, that my decisions are my own. They don't reflect my employer's decisions or any other employers. Like I know comments before were about, what I think I'm, I'm sorry, getting off topic.
Thank you, Mr. Nicolai. So we have a first on the, on the amended motion to Mr. Kreischer's.
I'll second that.
Lance, second that. Okay. With that, let's do a roll call so we're clear, please.
For the amendment.
On, on the amended motion. Thank you, Cassie.
Tony Nicolai?
Ah, yes.
Dan Bruce?
Yes.
Lance Trowell?
Yes.
Karen Vanenbergh?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Matt Kreischer?
Yes.
Fadwal?
No.
Yes.
A one.
A one. Thank you. And I believe that amendment took care of John's original motion as well, correct? So we're going to table?
Correct. That'll be tabled.
Yeah.
Should be identified that we tabled his first motion.
Right. Which will give you guys time to go.
Yep. We'll come to the recommendation.
Okay. All right. Onto the next item, probably much less exciting, school forest capital improvement update. I think this one's exciting, but that's, that's just me. At the April Education Operations Committee Meeting, Administration present-
There's just a question of whether we had to vote on the original. But John accepted, Robert's rules, we're, we're small boards. You can accept a friendly amendment like that. There was an amendment. John accepted it as, and so we don't technically have to vote on the original. We usually do, but you don't, you don't really have to. We're okay. Right, Jim?
Correct.
Jimmy, didn't know you were going to be this busy.
What's that?
You didn't know you were going to be this busy tonight, huh? All right. At the April Ed Ops Committee Meeting, Administration presented an update on the recent school forest capital improvements and related funding efforts. All right. Onto Agenda Item Nine, New Business. Couple in here do require action. First was the charter school contract renewals for EEA in Montessori. At the April Ed Ops Committee Meeting, Dr. Shannon Young and Elizabeth Channel shared charter school contracts for approval. As such, I am seeking a motion for approval of the charter contracts as presented.
So moved, so moved.
I'll second. Second on that.
All right. First by Mr. Webster, second by Mr. Boucher. All those in favor?
Pat, oh, sorry. Just quick note, there were some technical changes that came with the recommendation of DPI. Nothing substantial. Does the board wish to know more about those before they vote? Mrs. Channel is here. She could fill us in if, if you need to. But again, they're technical changes.
I, I'm good. I, I trust that they're not substantive, so you're good.
Okay. All right. Just want to make you aware.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions or comments on it? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Second item is also action, Girls Lacrosse Cooperative Club Agreement. At the April Ed Ops Committee Meeting, Dr. Jennifer Roche presented the Girls Lacrosse Cooperative Club Agreement for approval. I am seeking a motion to approve the Girls Lacrosse Cooperative Club Agreement as presented.
So moved. Second.
First by Mr. Trollop, second by Mr. Boucher. Comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, that motion carries as well. Thank you. The last item on our new business was the 2021 Summer Learning Program Report. At the April Ed Ops Committee Meeting, Dr. Phelps and Ms. Deb Heilman shared a brief presentation on the Summer Learning Program for 2021. That was informational only, no action required. All right. Onto open forum, Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report.
I have one comment to make.
Yes, Mr. Webster.
As the liaison to the CISA group, I wanted to just point out that, that the Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools comes from a lot of CISA nine and was actually very involved in the Wausau School District in the last couple of weeks, working on some of the charter school material. So just keeping people in mind that CISA nine is really having a profound influence on our school district.
Thank you. Others?
Mr. President, I would also like to invite our new board members, Mr. Kreischer and Ms. Vanenber- and Ms. Vandenberg, to tell us about their, their involvement with the Northwoods Conservative Political Education Conference that they did on Saturday. I would like to know what happened there.
Yeah, that, I guess that is a voluntary activity, and if they choose not to share whatever happened at this meeting, that is, that is their prerogative. They're certainly.
But if they would like to share it, that'd be great.
John, do you wanna share anything?
I mean, just for everyone to know what they're doing and.
John, do you wanna share anything?
You know, as new board members.
No.
Karen, would you like to share anything?
I was just invited to participate in what leadership looks like based on my values, so it was, it was a great event. Thanks for asking.
Great, thanks.
Wonderful, thank you. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Low.
Yes.
Few minutes on the Legislative Liaison Report, please.
I do. So I have a few articles here. I just printed this before I came. So from NBCChicago.com, the COVID vaccine for 12-year-olds to 15-year-olds, when it could be available and how to get it for your children. So while working out this morning, it was on the morning news. So a decision from the U.S. Food and Drug Administration on whether to authorize emergency use of Pfizer's COVID-19 vaccine for ages 12 to 15 is expected this week. So when could kids 12 to 15 get the COVID vaccine? A federal official, speaking on the condition of anonymity to preview the FDA's action, told the Associated Press the agency was expected to expand its emergency use authorization for Pfizer's two-dose vaccine by this week. The person familiar with the process confirmed the timeline and added that it is, that it is expected that the FDA will approve Pfizer's use by even younger children sometime this And that's the extent of that. And then from TMJ4.com, this is from May 7th, Milwaukee area pharmacies are booking vaccine appointments for 12 to 15-year-olds already. So Pfizer executives say their vaccine is expected to be authorized for kids ages 12 to 15 by early next week. And again, just a reminder, this article is from May 7th. But the Food and Drug Administration is not confirming if or exactly when that authorization will happen, so that'll happen sometime this week. And so as of this article running, John Phillips, from the owner of Sage Specialty Pharmacy in Milwaukee, he did say, "By first thing Monday morning, we had 125 people signed up already. And then less than a week later, the list had grown to 375 kids." So Milwaukee's already prepping to do that. And then I have another article from NBC, "The Number of COVID-19 Variants First Detected in the U.K. Soars in Wisconsin," and this article was published May 16. So over 1,300 cases of the COVID-19 variant originally found circulating in the United Kingdom has been discovered in Wisconsin to date, state health officials report Thursday. So I'm looking at a chart, and the B117 variant, as of May 6th, there were 1,341 persons that were diagnosed with that variant of COVID. I have a statement from the organization Kids Forward. So Kids Forward, they advocate for effective, long-lasting solutions that break down barriers to success for children and families in Wisconsin using research and community-informed approach. Kids Forward works to help every child, every family, and every community thrive. And their statement, they released on May 7th, from their CEO, Michelle Mackey. So they made a statement on the legislature, cutting the governor's budget on a party-line vote. So she states, "Deep and persistent racial disparities have been holding Wisconsin and all Wisconsinites back. The pandemic and other events of the past year have exposed the depth of those disparities and the imperative to eliminate them. The governor proposed a budget that made much-needed investments in the fundamental building blocks of Wisconsin's growth and future prosperity, our children, families, schools, health, and equitable communities. Without having time to review, let alone seriously considered the public input from thousands of people all over Wisconsin, the legislature's Joint Finance Committee voted strictly on party lines to throw out 400 items in the governor's proposed budget, including expanding battery care, juvenile justice reforms, and increasing access to broadband," which was a big problem this year. Then they doubled down and removed everything else that was in the governor's budget, thereby taking the proposed budget back to what the legislature passed in 2019. Unless the committee can reconsider a number of the provisions they removed today, they will completely ignore what has happened over the past tumultuous year and squander an opportunity to invest in a more equitable future for all." And that is the heart of her statement.
All right.
So for release on May 10th, UW Milwaukee honors Kizmekia Corbett for her vaccine innovation. Another article from the Lacrosse Tribune, "Dane County Leads State in COVID-19 Vaccination, But Racial Disparities Persist," and already went through that with their statement. Also today, Attorney General Josh Call, with 44 other attorney generals, urging Facebook to abandon the launch of Instagram Kids. So they're citing serious concerns about the safety and well-being of children and the harm social media poses to young people. Attorney General Josh Call and a coalition of 44 attorneys general are urging Facebook to abandon its plans to launch a version of Instagram for children under the age of The Department of Workforce Development announces a new resource for Wisconsinites. It's called the Apprenticeship Navigators, and this was released today. So they've, so the Department of Workforce Development has created a five-new apprenticeship navigator positions to help Wisconsinites find open apprenticeship opportunities. So that's very exciting. And then, last but not least, from Chipewa.com, Senate Committee Advances Some GOP Election Bills But Others Remain Stalled. So the State Senate Election Committee on Friday advanced two Republican electric, election bills, but several others are likely to get a vote by the full Senate without major changes. All of the bills are almost certain to be vetoed by Democratic Governor Tony Evers, but are part of a national trend of Republican lawmakers trying to amend voting rules after former President Donald Trump propagated false and unproven claims of fraud in the 2020 election. And then it goes on in that way. So that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Low. Okay, moving on, Superintendent Commentary.
Nothing to add at this time, thank you.
Nothing to add at this, all right. Okay, Presiding Officer Commentary, I would like to enter the Board Member Liaison District Activity Report into the official record. And the, the other comment I would like to make, and going back to our previous discussion on Project Relaunch, is I, I know that everyone in this room that's watching, many, many people have vested interests in what was discussed. We have heard, the board has heard, and I know that we as individuals, administration has heard feedback from an enormous amount of people. And I would just like to say thank you, because the feedback that I have seen and the discussions that I have had with staff, with students, and the public in general, have been very, very respectful, they have been very professional, they've been very courteous, and frankly, I have learned a lot on either side of the issue. And I would just like to extend that, that thank you, and say that it is much appreciated, because truly, those types of discussions, when they're held at that level, are beneficial to what we're trying to do up here. We, we didn't get into, and I didn't see, well, except for one, you know, people get personal and, and start attacking, but absent of that one, it was refreshing to, to get the amount of feedback that, that we received and the manner in which it was received. So I would just like to offer my thank you to all those that, that reached out. Okay, having said that, we're now going to seek a motion to enter into closed session to discuss the WEA contract negotiations per Statute 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, Sub, Sub G. I'm seeking a motion for that closed session.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
First by Jim, second by Cody, all right.
Yes.
Yes.
Karen Vandenberg?
Yes.
Elizabeth Webster?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Matt Kreischer?
Yes.
Todd Ball?
Yes.
Cody Nicklaus?
Yes.
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 Is that the only item, Pat?
Well, that was gonna be my, my question, is that can we, there, there's another one on the agenda for a closed session, for the board to consider the workshop, a board workshop facilitator. Can we do both of those at the same time, or do we have to reconvene in open, then go back and make closed?
We, they, they should be handled separately. And the first one should take five minutes, five minutes. We just need to do the board a, a confidential update.
All right, wonderful. Then we will reconvene in open session, if necessary, to take action.
And then we're gonna come back here?
Yes, to vote again, to go into closed.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Where are we going, folks, Cassie?
We're in the library.
Library, gotcha.